Good evening and welcome to the February 10th, 2015 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by Public Access Cable. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable stations, channels 5, 19, and 20, is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Before we proceed, I had something that I wanted to bring up to the committee by way of, I guess, an announcement. I just wanted to take a minute to share that I would like to make a change in the way that we're handling discussions on the committee. I haven't really been strictly adhering to Robert's Rules of Order, the way I should be, and I think it would be beneficial to all of us if we reverted back to the appropriate protocol for discussions during our meeting, discussion time. So, I wanted to share with you, this is what the guidelines are for chair people of school committees, and it states that both law and practice require that no person address the meeting who has not been recognized by the chair. Robert's Rules of Order recommends that no person speak twice until all others have been recognized. All speakers should address the chair unless otherwise directed. So, I just wanted to suggest that we go back to that proper meeting procedure, and I think it would make our, I think it would improve the quality of our discussions and the efficiency of our discussions if we did that, to make sure everyone's heard and move things along, perhaps, in a more orderly fashion. So, I'm hoping that you were all in agreement to proceed that way, and we'll just start that way, start off tonight, short that procedure. So, thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, I guess I'll proceed for Superintendent Ballen's.
You can pause just a moment. Oh, okay, sorry.
I think I'll do the announcements, I think that'd be fine. Okay, Superintendent Ballen's will be announcing that the next school committee meetings are March 10th, April 14th, and 28th, May 12th, and June 9th and 23rd. The Special Education Parent Advisory Council will meet on the following dates in the conference room on the second floor at 50 Payson Avenue. There'd be February 11th, March 11th, April 8th, May 13th, and June 10th. There's no school February 16th to the 20th due to Washington's birthday and winter break. There are half-days of school on Thursday and Friday, March 19th and 20th, due to parent-teacher conferences. There's a half-day of school on Tuesday, March 24th, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There's no school on Friday, April 3rd, due to Good Friday. There's no school on April 20th to the 24th, due to Patriots' Day and spring break. There's a half-day of school on Friday, May 1st, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There's no school on Monday, May 25th, due to Memorial Day, and at this time, the last day of school is scheduled for Monday, June 20th, considering our snow days. Okay, and I will ask if there's any other announcements that Superintendent Ballen's would like to ask you or I'd like to make.
Welcome. I was just at the kindergarten information night over at the high school, and there was a great crowd over there, and I did take the time to get up in front of the group at the auditorium to say hello and welcome, and that's why I'm a little late getting over here, but everyone seemed to be having a wonderful time, and we had a very good turnout, so we're very pleased with that.
Great. Very good.
My apologies for not being here right on time.
Mine as well. You have a great excuse. Okay, moving on to correspondence. Yes. Welcome Laura.
Hello. We have one letter tonight, I assume, from Suzanne Gower. Two, I'm sorry, a little out of sorts, sitting down at the last minute, addressed to Mrs. Gower from Dr. Perone, the principal at the high school, thanking her for the donation of the United States flag in honor of her father, who was a member of the East Hampton High School, class of 1943. His name is Victor T. Krzanowski. So, we extend thanks to her for that donation, and that is all we have for correspondence tonight.
Okay, very good. Do we have some gifts to report?
We do. We have two. We vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts: to Taylor Real Estate for the donation of $150 to the East Hampton High School Student Renaissance, and again to Suzanne Gower for the donation of the United States flag to East Hampton High School in honor of her father, Victor Krzanowski, East Hampton High School, class of 1943.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, at this time, we invite anyone?
Can I ask a question about that last gift? Is the intention that the flag be flown at the high school?
I don't know what their intention is. Dr. Perone will be here in a little while, and we certainly could ask him that question. I believe it was packaged up, and I'm not sure exactly what they're going to do with it.
Right, and I don't want to anticipate an issue where one doesn't exist, but I know, given the lessons learned by our neighboring city about what looks like, at first glance, a good idea in one case, as a precedent, can be problematic down the road. I don't think flags and crosswalks are necessarily analogous, but if someone else donates a flag in the name of something or in honor of someone else, would we then, you know, ever say no?
Well, and I think that that's why it's important that we think, be thoughtful about how we accept this gift and how we show our appreciation for it.
Right, and I don't mean in any way to, you know, question the gift in the example in front of us. It seems like, from what we have here, you know, a perfectly lovely gesture. I just would want us to be conscious of the possibility that someone might donate something to the high school in honor of someone or something, where we might pause, and if we don't have a clear rationale as to how we're going to discriminate one from the next, we put ourselves in a position of having to backtrack.
That is noted. Okay, moving on to the public speak portion of our agenda. At this time, we invite members of the public to come and speak to us about any topic that's not on our agenda, and it doesn't look as though anyone's here to do so, but we do know that Wendy has something that she'd like to share.
Yeah, so as a, just as an honored member of the city's municipal energy committee, which is an advocacy committee to the mayor, I just wanted to alert the community and my fellow school committee members that there's a very exciting energy survey currently out and about in town, and it will only take a few minutes of your time, and if you go to the city's homepage, www easthampton.org, it's right on the homepage, I believe it's called, well, actually I have it, Resident Survey by the City of East Hampton. They're due, we're taking the surveys through March 20th, and it's very quick, it's Survey Monkey, it's very painless, but it's, it will give us a lot of information back for how the mayor and the city moves forward with educational campaigns and projects, and where money is spent, where energy's spent, and it's all about energy consumption. And I wanted to bring it here, because if you remember, this became a very important topic to the schools, because we use such a large percentage, the energy consumption in the city is swallowed up by the schools, both for good and not-so-good reasons. So, just to play our part as school members and responsible citizens, I want to just encourage you, ask you, to visit the city's website and take a few minutes to complete that survey before March 20th.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks Wendy. Moving on to our finance subcommittee report.
We'll be meeting a week from today on the 17th at 6:30.
Policy Subcommittee.
We have the two policies for a second reading in your paperwork. Our first policy is the substitution teacher compensation, and these are updated because of the minimum wage change. So, I would like to make a motion that we approve for the final reading, policy G C B C dash 1, the substitution teacher compensation policy.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our second one is the community use of facilities. This one is being updated for the custodial fees as well as the use of the pool, and we did have some comments at the last meeting, and I think those are.
So, maybe I could speak to that. What I discovered after the last meeting, because I was as surprised as you were when we, I saw the numbers on the current, what was called the current policy, that that wasn't actually our current policy. That wasn't the one that we worked off from as a policy subcommittee. Somehow, my assistant got the one that was in the policy book that wasn't as updated as the one we worked on. So, that's the one that went into our packet. So, this time, we have the one that is the more updated with corrections, and I made a few corrections, other corrections to it as well, particularly in the, on the first page in category A, B, and C, under the examples of organizations that would fall into each category. For instance, in category B, instead of junior miss, it's now called distinguished young women, so I substituted that. Actually, and I believe the barracudas no longer exist, I just discovered that today, so we might want to cross that one out as well. And then we took out some others that were no longer in place at this point in time and wouldn't really serve as good examples. And then you can see on the second page that the corrective amount is $15 an hour for groups B and C, when the building is open, the custodian is already on duty. When the building is closed, for all groups A, B, and C, the amount is $35 an hour, and that was, that was one of the major changes that we had made in the other policy. So, if we just cross out barracudas, I think that the updated policy is what we as a committee, or you as a committee, as a subcommittee, wanted to put forth.
Yes. Motion to accept the second reading for the policy K G dash E, Community Use of School Facilities.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to our CES update. Wendy.
I am embarrassed to say that the last meeting, which I believe Nancy went to the superintendent's portion beforehand, I misinformed myself and my employer superintendent in the neighboring district that the meeting was canceled because of snow. I had looked on their website, and it was the day before, but they, it's, they had it in these big letters, and that's all my really rapid-moving brain went to, and so I announced to other people that the superintendent's dinner was canceled, and I then didn't go to the meeting myself, and so I apologize, but I do have the executive director's report, and I'll send it to you and to Nancy, so it can be included, emailed out to everybody. I apologize. I was actually really bummed, I enjoy those meetings, and they only happen once every other month, so when you miss a meeting, you really feel like you missed a large content, so obviously.
Especially when you're a saboteur.
Especially when you're responsible for other people missing it.
It was, actually, it was a little confusing, because it did appear that it was canceled initially, and then.
Thank you.
And then I got a second email saying that it, in fact, it wasn't canceled, but it did seem confusing, but it was really very nice of the collaborative to sponsor this little dinner for us, and we got to meet some of the other members of the committee, and other superintendents were there, so it was really very nice. We had a little dinner, and then we left so that the board could have their meeting.
Nancy, do you still get together, like, quarterly or so, through CES with the superintendents?
We get together monthly.
Monthly?
Every month, we have a meeting on Friday morning.
Oh, good.
So, they update us on what's happening at the collaborative, and then they ask for what kinds of support we need, and, yes, it's a very worthwhile endeavor. It also gives us the superintendents an opportunity to talk together about some of the initiatives, and then for the collaborative to think of ways that they can support us in initiatives that keep coming to us from the state.
Thank you. Student Activities Update. We have Brian Atwater.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, January 31st, the EHS We the People team competed against teams across the state and did fantastically. Last week, the Students Against Destructive Decisions Club sent four members to Washington, DC, to speak at a National Drug Awareness Prevention Convention. And the musical Kiss Me Kate was held this weekend, February 8th, February 5th through the 8th, and they did phenomenally. The Drama Club put on a great production, and I hope that everybody in the community got to see it. And the EHS Open House will be tomorrow night, February 11th, and the Student Council invites upcoming 8th grade students and parents to enjoy walking tours of the building and get to know teachers.
Walking towards the building?
Walking through.
Tours.
Oh, tours.
Sorry.
You can wa, and now you can turn around.
Yes, oh, I just wanted to mention that our own Lori Ingraham's daughter was the star of the play. I just wanted to mention that.
Yes, did a wonderful job.
Fabulous.
The play was.
She has fun, they all do fabulous. These kids, they are very talented kids in that drama club, so.
I went Sunday afternoon, as did the mayor, and we both enjoyed it immensely.
Very much so.
Yeah, it was wonderful. And I just wanted to mention that the Coalition Director, the East Hampton Health and Youth Coalition Director, Ruth Ever, and I were also at this conference in Washington, DC. It's called the CADCA Conference, Communities Against, I know I was going to forget this, Drug, Drug Something. Anyway, it's sponsored by the Drug Free Communities Act, and so, and we took two of the high school students with us, and then two went with Ms. Dunn, and kind of all met up there, but I did get to see the SAD presentation, and it was very well-received. Really, the room was crowded, and they were very engaged, the, every, all the participants, and our, Ms. Dunn, and it was Brian Delaney and Jacob LaPrada were very engaging in their presentations, so they got all kinds of accolades at the conference.
Ken, I was assuming it was Brian and Jacob going, which is great. Who were the other two students?
Stephanie and Samantha. Samantha Garcia and Stephanie.
Therian.
Therian, thank you.
Nice.
Thank you. So, we had a really nice time, and I think they enjoyed the conference, got a lot out of it, so, which they can bring back to their SAD organization.
And I believe they've been asked to give the same presentation at another national convention in Tennessee this spring.
Wow, very nice. Very nice. Excellent. It was a great opportunity for sharing of ideas, and that was the purpose for it. There were a number of other youth presentations, so they got to go to a number of youth, there was like a youth track and adult track, and we got to go to seminars and trainings for adults, and they went to the same kind of events for youth, youth-oriented, so that was some of it. And the proceeds from SAD paid for a few of the participants, and from the Drug Free Communities grant paid for the others of us to attend. There was also a graduation for our cohort, so it was important that Ruth and I be there. We, they had a big presentation, a big auditorium full of all the different cohorts from across the country who were graduating, they'd done all their trainings, and so that was, that was pretty impressive, too. They had some legislators from the federal government there, and, actually, our group, I wasn't able to go this day, but there's a Capitol Hill Day, and they went to Capitol Hill to talk with representatives, and they actually got to meet Elizabeth Warren and Markey, so, briefly, so that was pretty exciting for everybody, too.
Great. And Brian, I just wanted to ask you, We the People, I had heard that they came in third place, is that true?
I heard that, too, yes.
I was going to say, that's pretty remarkable.
Were you there?
It is.
No, I wasn't able to be there.
Were you weren't there this time?
I did get to visit while they were rehearsing. I know that the Unit 6 team, I believe, won first place of all the Unit 6 teams in the state, and out of deference to the, I think I could pull up three or four names from my memory, so I'll wait. I think we should invite Kelly Brown's students to come and do a mock hearing here, so that the citizens in the community can see the character and the quality of the work that they do. I know they're really busy, and it's a, it's a U.S. history class, and the We the People competition is a, an additional opportunity, but it absorbs a lot of time, and I'm sure they've, they've returned to preparing for the AP exam, so I don't want to have an invitation be a burden, but I think, you know, in the future, it would be great for people in the community to see what these folks do, because I think it's hard to understand until you see the, you know, you could explain soccer to somebody who's never seen it, but somehow watching a few minutes of a soccer game, you know, makes clear what it's about, so perhaps sometime down the road, we could have some of them come. I know they were working really hard, and they were doing terrific, all of the rehearsals that I saw were awesome.
Are the rehearsals open to the public?
These were opportunities to just work with the students in class, so they weren't, and again, I'm way, I'm pushing Kelly out here on the edge of a limb in front of me. I do know other communities in the state that have done it. One of the advantages that we have is, my understanding is, that the We the People program is well-supported through the generosity of the community, and I think that it would also be neat for the folks who've, who've made those donations, who might not get to see the competition occur this year, I think in Braintree.
Yes.
And, and so it's not possible for everybody, you know, who would like to see them, to get to a place like that, but they might have taped it, so maybe we could even just put a tape up on, you know. ECAT could do it.
And if not, we could perhaps arrange to have ECAT do a video of them.
Yeah, it is, and having had experience with Kelly's classes in, over a number of years, one of the most impressive, authentic assessment activities that they do. Doesn't show up on MCAS or PARK or any of the other stuff that comes from on high. It's kind of just a popular way of showing that you really understand something and can speak from both memory, but also sort of on the spot. They're asked questions by a panel of judges that they don't know what's coming, and they have to quickly come up with thoughtful answers based in historical and constitutional evidence, and it often produces a lively discussion, and it's really affirming. My sense from what Kelly said to me was that the students came back really proud of what they'd accomplished.
Was Samantha one of the participants?
I think so.
I think so, because I think she was, I thought it was this year, she was talking about it on the trip, and how intensive the training was, and I had the pleasure of seeing one of those mock competitions at Williston a few years ago, and it is so impressive, the knowledge that our students have, and the way they're able to present themselves, and Samantha was saying how kind of nervous she was before she went out the first time, and then after she got out there, she started to feel much more confident, and so, you know, we should just be so proud of our students and that program, and thankful to Peter for his contribution in bringing that to our high school.
Absolutely.
That's worked well.
Much appreciated.
It's been great. One of the, I will say this, I won't mention the two boys, but there were two folks there who I coached in T-ball, and it's, it's something else to see them as sophomores quoting the, you know, the Interstate Commerce Clause of the Constitution in a discussion of how, you know, constitutional questions. It's, it shows you another dimension of folks and gives you real confidence that, you know, the civic life of the community is, has got some great leaders in development.
And Brian, did you do that a couple of years ago?
I did, my sophomore year.
I was just going to share that I was, and Lori, Lori and I were able to go two years ago to Harvard University and witness this whole thing with students involved, and I have to tell you, I remember one particular student impressing me to the moon, and approaching Mr. Brian Atwater after the, after the, or during the program, after his part in it, and I didn't know him at the time, and just telling him how impressed I was with all that he contributed to that program. It was really amazing, so.
Good for you.
I just have to, just had to mention that, because he stood out to me in a big way at that, that year, that program.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we are now at, oh, we have another category in our discussion section, and Peter, you were going to mention something that you thought we should have on a future agenda.
Oh, yeah, I just think we should clarify administratively the process by which the stipends for members of the school committee are paid. There's been a conversation about different ways to do it, and I think ultimately, it's a policy question that we should just, it's just an administrative process, it doesn't, you know, the amount is set by the, by the city council and the mayor, it's not anything more than figuring out how it gets distributed and when, and I think my own view is it would be neat if it aligned with the tax year and the year of service, rather than the fiscal year of the school, but it, once you set it, that should happen automatically.
Great. Is that something we can vote on tonight, or what do we want to do with that?
Well, I think maybe a discussion of how, you've expressed your, your wish for that, and maybe other people can, you know, share how they feel about it, or if they have another way of looking at it, and then I can take that all back to, to our business manager, Andy Pickett, and.
I support Peter's suggestion, for the record, that was in the email chain, I don't know if we should print that out or something, but it's just easier when you're doing your taxes. Anyone else have anything you want to say? Comments?
I think we should talk to Andy, see if he's got a reason he does things the way he does things, and I don't want to mess him up, budget whatever's easiest.
Right. Okay.
So, we'll take the Peter's suggestion to Andy, and unless there are reasons not to do it that way, then we'll get a message out to everybody about how it will be done. Does that make sense?
Great.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so we're moving on to the superintendent's report.
So, I wanted to give you as school committee members and the public an update on our website. We've been doing some work on it this year, and I think we've got some new features that we're very pleased with, and some other features to come, but I'm going to try to pull this up here on the, on the screen. So, we've, thanks to our Director of Curriculum, Polly Parker, who also is a photographer on the side, we have some nice new photos on the homepage of our schools. Polly went out and did some, some very nice photography, and so we are showcasing that on the homepage. Our principals are also working on making their pages more vibrant, and I will show you Maples, which I think is a very good example of it. Our tech director, Ashley Barstow, has helped them incorporate photos, and, you know, new events, there are all kinds of wonderful photos here. Here's one that's about their Super Bowl food drive. There's the whole Maple School faculty, or, sorry, student body. Some announcements, they try to keep up to date with the announcements, and this one is about the kindergarten information night that's happening tonight at the high school. More pictures of our students having fun on the Maple Playground, and some photos of classrooms as well, which I think are wonderful. This one, oops, is of a first-grade classroom right here, Ms. Morgan's class, and here's a fourth grade over here. Some great photos of our garden, and our garden project, sunflower seeds, and some wonderful photos, so. As well as, you can see that over here, if you open up on the links over here, there are reading connections, there's some reading information here, newsletters are kept up to date over here, so you can access those, and the other websites have also been updated as well. And then the new feature that I'm particularly pleased with, and I am hoping that we can get some more participants to join us in, and this could be students as well, Brian, so you could actually volunteer, or see if you could get some other students to volunteer for our Why Choose East Hampton link here. And we have Mike Riordan, who's been doing, writing stories for us, doing a little PR for us. We'll go around and interview you, take photos, and then we'll keep up, you know, rotating these on this link, so if you look here, you'll see a family and a person that you recognize. Deb Lysia was nice enough to do one, and so it's just wonderful to have these parent testimonials, you know, if we had student testimonials, we're looking for students who've graduated, all that, you know, people who'd be willing to do this. Lynn Gaet has a, I believe it's her niece who, yes, who's a junior at East Hampton High School, and she is so positive about our high school because of all the wonderful things that her niece brings home and tells her about, so she wanted to participate. These initiated from the Outreach Advisory Committee. I asked the committee if we could get some people on the committee to do the first ones to encourage other people and to give a sample, and so Lynn is on the committee, as is Deb, and as is Peter Marks. So, Peter talked about our special education programs and how supportive they are for his students, so we're very excited about this, and as I say, you know, it And as I say, you know, if you know anyone, or if any of you are interested in doing one of these, that would be great. Just let me know, and I'll send Mike Riordan your way. Any questions or? Okay. So that is our website. And the next on our list is the East Hampton High School Program of Studies, but Dr. Peron said he's going to be a little late because he has a, an event with the athletes tonight.
The seniors' night, right?
The senior night.
Senior night.
For boys varsity basketball.
Right. So he was going to attend that, and then come, he's a little after seven. So I would suggest that we perhaps take on the PE waivers. He'll be here too, you know, maybe to want to speak to that as well, but we could begin that discussion and then do the program of studies when he comes in. Does that work for me?
Can I give a shameless plug?
Sure.
A school event? Shameless plug?
Yes, absolutely.
Just because you were talking about the website, and I saw it on the link up there, but, and I don't know the specifics, which is why the website made me think of it, but there's an upcoming First Annual PTO Pancake. What's it called?
Breakfast?
Pancake breakfast, but there's, they're doing some.
It's like Pancakes and Pajamas, I think they're calling it?
Yeah, and it's February 29th. I know, because I volunteer, I volunteered, so I know I've been getting all these emails. So there's a tremendous amount of work, just based on what I'm reading, behind the scenes, volunteer efforts that have gone into this. I don't know the specifics, but I'm sure if you look at that PTO link on our school website, I would imagine it's there. It's at the high school, it's February 28th. I don't know the start and end time. Off the top of my head, probably nine, it's either eight or nine start time.
I could text the people, but they're at the kindergarten information night, and they won't respond to me.
So I encourage everyone to go and look it up.
It isn't early till, early in the morning, I think it's about two and a half hours. But they're also inviting incoming kindergarten families too. It's just to, you know, trying to kind of, we have great bonds, but crop, even though we have the separate buildings, we have great bonds between families with Central Puppen and Maple, so this is kind of.
It's a nice social gathering.
Yeah. A chance for all the kids to get together regardless of which building they're housed in.
Nice.
And they're hoping to make it an annual event moving forward.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving on to our discussion of PE waivers. Peter had requested that we have another conversation about this topic, and I didn't know, Peter, if you wanted to kick off the discussion?
Well, I just wanted to put forward a revised and perhaps a narrower policy proposal so that it would help clarify the purpose of the waiver and perhaps set aside some, but certainly not all, of the concerns that were expressed the last time we discussed it, and that that was that the, for an athlete enrolled in an athletic program under the supervision of the high school, that the physical activity portion of the physical education curriculum be waived while that student was participating in that sport during that season. And, you know, my thinking in that is that it's redundant, and if it would allow a student to pursue another area of interest in the school, that where they would still have to accumulate the same number of credits and meet all other graduation requirements in total, that for the handful, and it sounded from our previous discussions that would only be a handful of people, that we afford them that flexibility, or we afford the school that flexibility by a matter of policy rather than having it left, as I think it was the last meeting, where it would be treated sort of case by case, where each individual student would have to come and sort of make an appeal based on their own individual circumstances. So that's, that's, you know, I could say much more, but I think that's the, that's the policy that I would like us, and I think we had a discussion about it in general and took away a sense. I don't think we voted. I think it would be healthy for us to actually vote yea or nay on a policy related to it because that, that also offers clarity rather than just a, sort of a, you know, this is the mood of the meeting, right? There's something definitive. Sometimes people can ask a lot of questions and, that seem to be in support of a policy idea, and then vote against it once they've heard what they've learned, and vice versa. So I think sometimes reading from what people have said to how they actually vote is, it's difficult to be certain.
Does anyone have any thoughts, comments they would like to share? Question, but I can go ahead.
In the policy, you said they'll be exempt from PE credits that semester that they play a sport? Is that correct?
During the, there's a disconnect between the semesters and the seasons.
Yeah.
So I think that the accommodation there would have to be for the time period when they were enrolled in a school-approved athletic program, you know, one of the, one of the activities that would produce the same kind of physical exercises they would be doing in that component of physical education class.
Okay. I think, I mean, my question towards that is that, like, PE credits are done by, like, numerically as credits, so students have the opportunity to spread their PE courses out over all four years. I know I took a PE course my freshman year, my junior year, and to my senior year. So I don't, as the semesters and seasons kind of correlate, or lack thereof, I don't, I don't know if it should be a semester-season type system, or rather, if you complete two years of a varsity sport, you are waived from your AP credits instead of like semester-wise.
I can understand your concern in digesting the logistics of that.
Sure. I mean, and I'm open to any, you know, the goal here is to, is to serve. You know, we, when we met last, we heard in the first portion of the meeting about college placement. And from my perspective, there was, I made an inference from that information as I was thinking about the policy, where it might serve a student well in the admission process to take, in addition to their participation in a varsity sport, another academic class with the space that would be made available, you know, pursue their interest in math, science, English, history, world language, whatever it might, you know, whatever, performing arts, whatever it is, that that might afford them some help in that, in that ever challenging process of being selected for, you know, the one or two schools that they most would like to attend.
Mayor Karen?
I just have a question. Peter, are you talking about changing the policy to approve waivers so that the policy, like, are you talking about changing the policy itself so that it would allow for waivers? Because right now, are we getting, I get, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I taped it and watched as soon as I got home from my other meeting. And what I didn't get out of it, are we getting a lot of requests for this from, because now you're talking about keeping it specifically for athletes, or, you know, somebody already involved in one of the approved athletic groups. So are we getting a lot of requests for waivers? Is that what's happening now from the, from the students, from the athletes?
So Dr. Peron is here. He's just come into the room. And Dr. Peron, I would refer that question to you, if you could.
Can I just ask a question that you might also be able to answer while, just two birds with one stone? Is that okay? All right, thank you. Can you just speak to, when you're addressing this, the two things that I didn't get clarification on last time? The first of which is what we require for PE versus what the minimum requirement is for the state of Massachusetts? Just, I feel like I don't have the information.
I guess I'll start with the first question that I heard. I haven't received requests for waivers that have gone beyond like an independent study. So no, I haven't received any requests for waivers based on, and again, I'm going on what I heard coming in, and I apologize for being late, but we had senior night for basketball, so I wanted to be there at the start. And what I think I heard was that the, an athlete in a varsity sport could seek a waiver while they're participating in that sport for that semester.
I don't think that, that wasn't my understanding.
Well, I mean, that, that's the essence of it. I was trying to pull up the information from the website that might answer some of the questions too. Yeah. I guess what I was asking the committee to revisit as a, as a narrow question is, would there be merit in allowing students who want to take another exact match in terms of credits, but not have it be in physical education while they were participating in a, in a sport that's supervised by the school?
Which is what I understood.
Right.
Yeah. So I haven't received any requests for those. I have received some for independent studies for a student who is working with a teacher or for a content area waiver or independent study, or for an elective if they're working outside of school. So I have received those, and we've approved them via the policies that are already in place, independent studies. The second question was, what does the state require? And I just, I went to the Mass, DESI site and looked up the Mass Core requirements, and the Mass Core requirements are pretty straightforward. I shared them today with the superintendent. English Language Arts, four units, math, four units, science, three units, lab-based science, history, social science, three units, foreign language, two units. Physical education is the only one that says physical education as required by law. State law states physical education shall be taught as a required subject in all grades for all students. Health can be integrated into physical education science or taught as a standalone course. So we offer it to all students every semester. So as Brian has said, he took it for freshman year, he took it junior year, and then senior year twice because it's two semesters.
Yeah.
So we, I feel, are fulfilling that offering opportunity for students to take physical education all four years at the high school. We require it for eight credits. Eight credits. Two of those credits have to be taken freshman year, balanced off of a health class, a health wellness, so a ninth grade wellness, ninth grade PE. We do some orientation in there. We bring school adjustment counselor, we bring guidance counselors into the class. So there's some programming that goes into it. But that's the only requirement specific to course that they have to take. They have to take eight credits in PE. Now, looking at a 32-block opportunity for Brian or any other student at the high school, four years in a four-by-four block, they can take 32 blocks. Of those blocks, we require two of them to be physical education. So two of 32, which is 6% of their total time at the high school, is in that requirement. I feel, looking at what the Mass Core says, looking at what we're offering, I think it's a reasonable expectation and requirement. We're giving students opportunities to take 30 other blocks in those Mass Core areas. Alls they need to graduate are 108 credits. Most students get much more than 108 credits, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
In our conversation that was started as a request from the superintendent, I went to the student council, the school council, the team leaders. On none of those, in none of those places have I received this overwhelming push for waiver in PE. So just the facts, those are the facts as I have them.
Okay. Questions for Dr. Peron?
So regarding the blocking, are the PE classes generally two credits per class, and the class is half of a block?
We.
Because I don't understand how they're.
Okay, I get you. We have a semester broken up into two quarters.
Right.
For a second, third, fourth. PE freshman year is one quarter, and health is one quarter. They're each worth two credits. A full semester class is worth four credits.
So what's the time, does it take a full block for those two quarters?
Eighty-four minutes.
Okay.
Yes. Eighty-four minutes for a semester, that's a four-credit class. Eighty-four minutes for a quarter is two credits.
Okay.
Now that being said, we're trying to offer classes that meet the needs of our students. So we have low-impact fitness, Pilates, yoga-type classes. We have net sports, which are electives that you can get for two credits. Conditioning, real high intensity, you see a lot of the athletes from the, from the teams in that class.
So I guess my question is, how do you fit, so those electives then, are they generally half a block, or are they a quarter?
They are a quarter of a semester.
Okay. So you kind of need to take two to complement each other, otherwise you're going to have a void the second quarter.
We don't like those voids. So we also have quarter classes in art.
Okay.
Music technology, for example, fine arts.
Okay.
We have, previously had in others, but they've, those are the main ones that we have now.
So to recap, a student is required to take four credits of PE their freshman year?
No.
It would be two?
Two credits in PE, two credits in health.
In wellness. So, so, yeah, okay. So two is the PE and two is the wellness.
Yeah.
Freshman year.
Yes.
Then after that, a student is required to take a total of four additional credits.
The total is 12.
So health is different. Health is not falling under the PE.
Health is not a PE requirement. It is separate from PE.
Okay.
There, you have to take eight cred, four credits in health. Four credits in health. But you could get, I could take anatomy and physiology and earn health credits to do through anatomy and physiology.
There are options.
Or I could take it in a CPR class, which is a two-credit class, as opposed to, well, anatomy and physiology, which is a four-credit class.
Okay. So just to clarify, freshman year requirement is two credits for freshman PE.
In PE. And two in health.
And two wellness for freshmen.
That's correct.
Okay. So that leaves six credits remaining for.
For PE.
PE.
And you could take them in two-credit increments, two each year. So I could take, in my sophomore year, I could take a conditioning class, two credits, and balance it with an art class to fulfill my electives and to also, you know, get my PE requirements out of the way.
Okay.
Or I could take, we have students that take PE every semester, or, excuse me, every year for four years.
There, there are also, if I may, there are also semester-long PE courses. I know I took, my junior year, I took a semester-long PE course and fulfilled four of those credits.
Can I ask what it was?
That was modern PE with Mr. Miller.
It's, and it's kind of funny they say modern PE, but it's the PE class I'm used to. You know, you might play badminton, archery, you might do any of those things that, as we were growing up going to PE, what we did.
And additionally, that modern PE course, there is a two-credit, there's a quarter portion of it. So about, in my experience, about half of the class was in there for a semester, and the other half of the class was there for a quarter, and then went and switched to a quarter health, quarter art, whatever class.
Technology, something.
So there, there's a lot of discretion with how much PE the students would like to take at one time. So it's not really done, it's not really mapped out for the students, like with the block scheduling, like, there's, there is a lot of discretion as to when you'd like to take PE, how long you would like to take PE, all that.
And just to, I forgot a couple that were pretty important. We have robotics and forensics as quarter classes too, so that they've been in the pool, in the mix of what Little Vito could take his sophomore, junior, or senior year to fulfill those eight credits.
When we're talking about gen ed courses, what's the average? Are they typically four-credit classes? If you're taking one class, one semester, the full.
Most of our classes are semester-long, four-credit classes.
Okay.
Though we do have some full-year classes, AP Calc.
Right.
AP Chem.
I noticed forensics and robotics were cut for next year out of the program studies book?
No.
Other than that? Okay, I saw lines through them. I assumed.
Well, there, there's a change. We're trying to, well, do you want to have this?
Oh, yeah.
Want to go here? You want to wait?
No, we won't go there.
Okay, well, we can wait.
Okay, hold on.
Wendy?
I'm just wondering, and I don't tend to open Pandora's box, and I realize and will publicly apologize especially to you, Peter, that I know that last school committee's meeting, I got a little snarky. So I apologize for that. But around this topic. But I wonder if there's a bigger question, because I've been compelled to understand where both sides of the requests are coming from. But I'm wondering if the more substantial question isn't really about our scheduling or the number of credits that require for PE rather than waivers? Does that make sense?
I don't know.
And again, I'm not trying to open up a big box of things. I'm just wondering if, is, is the concern really about PE waivers? Or is the concern about, are you feeling comfortable? Is your guidance team feeling comfortable? Are the students feeling comfortable with the requirement that we have right now on PE? Could we change the number of credits? Or? Or is the way we do block scheduling, do we need to have that? I mean, is that the discussion? Because...
I was hired six years ago by Debbie Carter, Superintendent Fonsby, then curriculum director, was the one that was on the committee, search committee, that hired me. And we were, I was tasked with looking at the high school and rigor. What can we do to increase rigor at the high school? And so over those six years, you, you can see what we've done and how we've progressed in that time. I feel that, the strides we've made in AP, I feel like the strides we've made going from level three to level one. I feel like the, upping the graduation requirements to match Mass Core are significant, is, it's significant progress for East Hampton High School. And I really think it benefits the students of the school. I, I feel strongly that the programs that are in place, including PE, are strong, they're viable, and they serve our students and our community well. And in all honesty, I don't see a concern. I really feel that what we're doing is based on the Mass Core, which is what I was asked to do six years ago. And we are doing what, what we're being asked, and I feel like the students are being served well by our teachers, by our programs, and our school. So the facts, as I've put them out there, I think are pretty strong. The fact that at school council and at team leaders and at student council, no one's clamoring for me to make changes like this. Though, do people sometimes say to me, "Hey, maybe we should look at the four-by-four?" That's a question we've had every year I've been here. And that's something I'd be happy to talk about. But right now, focusing on this topic, I feel very strongly that what we're doing is the right thing.
Nancy? And I just want to lend my support to Dr. Perone. He was charged with bringing rigor to the high school. He and I had those conversations the first year that I became superintendent. And I think that there's a, a good amount of evidence that he has made great gains in that. Especially this year going from, bringing our high school from a level-three high school to a level-one high school and the other things that he's articulated as well. So I have every confidence in Dr. Perone and the, the curriculum that he's developed along with his team leaders and his school council and, and, you know, the, the students, the collaborative process.
And I would just say, there's no I, it's a we thing. And it's a team thing that we've worked very hard on, students included. Because they're the ones, when we're being tested and assessed, they're the ones that are progressing and succeeding. So it's really not about Vito, it's about us and what we've done at East Hampton High School. And I'm very proud of it.
Nancy Shabid.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? Comments? Laura?
Laura?
First of all, I think, I don't think anybody would be under the impression, nobody's calling East Hampton High School or Dr. Vito into question at all. That goes without saying. To address that elephant in the room and to play most dramatic endgame scenario, if we're talking about questioning the validity of PE as a program of study in the high school, the one thing I would assume is that nobody's going to want to let go of that initial health and wellness requirement. So best case, if you eliminate it and eradicate it altogether, you're getting eight credits for a four-year program of studies. Which, if you're talking about opening yourself up to things that are going to perhaps make you more attractive to colleges for admissions, that's two courses. You're talking about two courses over the year, over a four-year program of studies. I don't know that this is something that's that, you know, so you're talking about sacrificing an entire program of studies to gain the potential for some students to take two additional courses. I think that, to me, that feels a little bit extreme. I don't feel enough, but, you know, if, you know, to kind of put that to bed. Because my concern was in this discussion tonight, it was going to lead towards that, or dance around that, or call that into question, which is why I wanted to hear the numbers. Clearly, the state doesn't care how many we require for a number, it's just that we have to make it available. That was my understanding of what you read, but...
May I, Karen?
And you, from what I understand, you already are dealing with any type of requests on an individual basis.
We do have independent studies. Yes, we do.
It's already, you know, to be, to look at changing the policy versus what we're doing now. You know, taking it on as a specific individual request as, as a specific need arises. Seems to me more appropriate idea than changing a policy to allow something. You know, we are looking at when individual things come to us.
We are and we always do.
I think we're already, we're already there.
Right, it's not about a black and white policy, it's about our students. That's what's most important.
Can I just, Lori?
I will. One of the takeaways I got at our last meeting when we had the speakers here is to have a PE class and to have athletes and non-athletes work together, I think is very important. It's the one class that different groups of kids work as a team. And I know it was commented that, well, that could still happen in your math class, your English class, but it's not the same. It's not the same as doing a sport. It's doing a badminton or doing, doing some team sport with different groups of kids. So I, I'm not for the waivers. I, I feel we should leave it as it is. But I think, I think having all kids take the PE together is very important.
I agree.
Any other comments?
I'll just say, two things. First, a lot of the points I was going to make, Dr. Perone already made, about the facts that we have right now don't warrant a change. Whether or not there are more facts out there leads me to my second suggestion, which is that this is a conversation for the policy subcommittee. We're talking about changing the policy, and that's why that subcommittee exists. And I thank you for coming and giving us your time again after we did this last time. I think they're great conversations to have, I don't think this is the appropriate forum for, for this one.
Lori?
So can I ask if it was to go to the policy subcommittee? I think, I guess I would feel that we would need to have a vote first as to what the policy was going to change to? Or would the policy subcommittee, would it just be another, like a work session for everybody to get together to talk about this? I guess I am a little confused when we talk about it should go to the policy subcommittee.
Are you going to have a draft?
And I know, and I just told you how I felt, so I, I will go there and say, "Okay, we're not making a change." And I don't want to do that, but I don't know what...
My thought, since I brought it up, is that would be a forum for more research and more conversation and more, you know, gets more facts. If right now, all we have is everyone we've heard from who it would affect doesn't want it, those are all the facts I have. You know, if there's solid information out there about the good this would do, that'd be the place to research that and bring that. And then to have, to have the policy subcommittee decide on the policy and vote for it there and bring it to us. And it's my opinion, that's what the subcommittee is for. And the same with the finance committee. We shouldn't spend Tuesday nights all together talking about finance stuff. The finance subcommittee should come and say, "Hey, here's what, we did our homework, we did our research, here's what we think should happen."
So does, does, can I ask a question?
Sure.
A process question? Does, would then, if someone wanted, they put forward a motion for the policy committee, subcommittee to review that said policy? Maybe with specific recommended language?
Okay.
Exactly, Wendy. So I think that's, that's what you were asking. What are we asking? Are we going to even, even, you know, entertain a vote to ask the policy subcommittee to even discuss it or look into it? Or are we all set at this point? I haven't heard much argument in, in favor of these waivers. I was very impressed, like, and again, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I viewed it on, you know, I taped it and viewed it. And I was very impressed with the two students that, you know, had a lot of discussion with yourself and is done. And I didn't, I guess, maybe I might have, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see any reason to send it to the policy subcommittee at all. I, I guess that's where I'm going, is that, you know, do you even, as a committee, want to send it to the committee to discuss? But I'm not interested in sending, in changing any policy at this point.
And I don't want to make extra work for anybody, and if we already have a motion on the floor that needs to get voted on, it needs to get voted on. But that's just my suggestion, talking about going back to Robert's rules and all this. They can be more effective.
Nancy, can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Is the guidance department on record as saying that a student applying for the Honors College at UMass would be better served, should they prefer to take an academic course in place of a physical education course, that that would help them?
You asking me that question?
I'm just, you know, I, I've heard my, my colleagues on the committee say that the, that they haven't heard much. I, I, you know, I've heard, we've defended other concerns. We've defended the rigor of the school and Dr. Perone's record over the last six years. We've defended the integrity of physical education. Neither of those are part of the purpose of what I've presented here. I'm, I'm glad that we've reasserted something that wasn't in dispute from my perspective. I come at this policy strictly from the perspective of looking at an increasingly competitive college application process. And just want to be clear that we have the information in front of us, that the guidance department confirms our sense. There's a sense here that, as I've heard it, that it isn't going to make a big difference. That would be great to have said and acknowledged. I, I would dissent and disagree, but that's a piece of the information that I think should matter. And even if students aren't asking for it now, if that information were shared, it might alter the choices that they make going forward. There are, there have been some changes that have come about from student interest, and there's sometimes are changes that come about when we as elected officials say, "Gosh, here's something that, that, that people haven't necessarily had in the forefront of their, of their thinking, but it's related to other things that they're interested in." That's the place that I'm coming from. And so if I can, just affirm again my appreciation for the increasing success of the high school program overall and the merits of the, of the physical education program. My purpose is, is narrowly to help that small number of students. And if we can do it another way, that's great. But I, I think it would be useful at some level to know from our college and our guidance office that they, that they agree that the present program best serves them.
Okay, Nancy.
And so I also want to clarify that I don't, I didn't ever think that what Dr. Perone had done or the high school had done was in question. I never thought that. But I think that the, the question that is in front of us is made in the context of, you know, does our high school provide what it needs to provide to help our children, our students be, get into the schools that they want to get into? Is this something that they need to give them more of an advantage? I believe that's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm wondering. If it does give them an advantage, could we allow them to access it?
So I think the context of what the, the high school has done and then Dr. Perone's talk about rigor was to kind of frame that, that, that argument. I did talk with Chris Savaro, the guidance counselor at the high school, and, and I believe Chad McGuire also, and you may have other information, Dr. Perone, but they said that they didn't believe that PE credits would, are really considered when, how many credits you've taken in PE or how many perhaps courses you've taken. But what they'd look at is your GPA, you know, have you taken AP courses? You know, what kind of course history did you have? But not necessarily the number of courses. And, and of course, it's, you know, school by school and student by student. I think it's really that whole big picture. And Dr. Perone, maybe you have something more you can add?
Well, I just, I wanted to read just one sentence more from this at the bottom of the Mass Core summary. It says, "Mass Core is the recommended program of study that Massachusetts high school students need in order to be better prepared for college and career." And PE is clearly a part of that preparation. I think it has to do with balance. And when, when you send a transcript to the colleges, they take your core classes and look at your GPA in your core classes. So they're not going to probably look at little Vito's two-credit art class or his PE class. They are going to look at my APUS and my, my statistics and my calculus. Those are the things that they are going to look at. So they're looking at the core requirements that a, that student brings. And they're looking at balance. Were they an athlete? Were they in the band? Were they in drama? Where'd they do their, their, their community service work? What did they do outside of school? So I think it's a balance that, more than anything. And the Mass Core, again, clearly requires physical education, just doesn't say exactly how much. Whether it's, you know, in our system, it'd be 16 credits if we had it every year. We felt a good balance was eight.
I guess, can I interject something here? I just wanted to share a thought. I, I understand Peter's point, wanting to provide the students with every opportunity they can. And I understand that in a situation like he's describing, someone could take another AP class, which would, would be impressive when any college is looking at a transcript. I, I understand that. Personally, I have a concern with defining a policy just in terms of high school athletes, high school teams sanctioned by the high school. I see that personally as somewhat discriminatory. Because then you're providing additional opportunities to one segment of the school, student body, and not another. And personally, you know, as you've all heard my story, I think there are other exceptions to how you would define an athlete. There could be other exceptions. And in terms of the amount of physical rigor, different individuals are getting in whatever different means. You know, I, I happen to know of more than just the story of my daughter, other specific examples. Heard of one just yesterday where someone does a lot of physical exercise outside of school, wanted to be able to take two classes, whatever time this senior year, to determine which path they might want to pursue in college or which, which way to go for a major. And couldn't do it because they had a PE requirement to fulfill before graduation, so couldn't take that second class. That's unfortunate to me. However, so I think there are examples of those types of instances. However, I think there's a number of reasons why it wouldn't be wise to, to make a blanket policy change for a select group of people within the high school and, and single them out to say that you folks have these added opportunities, but the rest of the student body doesn't. So, I don't know, I just wanted to share my perspective on that. And the fact that I think, while I support the intent of what you have to share, Peter, I think that the, the framework for that would be somewhat discriminatory. And that perhaps we'd be better served to leave it be on some type of an exception basis as needed in the future.
Lori?
I'm just, to Peter's point regarding the honors, honors program and just adding a real-life example to it. So my son was an athlete, my daughter is not, but they have both taken or are taking their eight credits of PE and they've, they were both accepted into honors programs. So even with having the PE, they got into honors programs.
And I have no doubt our students get into, can get into whatever school they want to with the current programs that we have and we have to offer that, that they're, that they're eligible for. I have no doubt that it doesn't compromise their ability to get into the premier schools if that's what they want to do.
And that was my intent in sharing what I shared today. I, I didn't think you were questioning me as a professional or as a principal or anything like that. I just, I really, I felt strongly that what we're doing is helping our students meet their needs and getting them ready for the next level, whatever that level is for them. And wherever, wherever they're going, whether it's a career program, certification program, or a college program.
Brian?
I think that the current ways and means of the administration of EHS is that if a student has a concern and wants to waive their PE credits and is making up for physical fitness elsewhere, then up to now, they have been able to go to Dr. Perone and do an independent study and all that. Which I hope can bring us back to what Dan had brought up earlier about, should we send it to the policy subcommittee? Is it, is it worth further investigating and voting on if, in a way, it is already being assessed by the administration and dealt with on a case-to-case basis?
So that brings us to our, our next step here. If we have, do we all feel as though we have shared what you want to discuss about this topic? Has everyone shared their thoughts, feelings, ideas, suggestions? Peter, did you actually put a, is there actually a motion? Did you actually?
There's no second, so, there's no motion. I mean, there's, like...
Does anyone want a second motion?
What was the motion again, Peter?
Motion that we allow students to, who... Motion that we allow students to, who are enrolled in an East Hampton High School authorized athletic program, be waived out of the physical education requirement for that period of time, understanding, as Brian started us, to make us aware that there will be some logistical questions, which I think goes back to Dan's point about it probably would need more ironing out. But it sounds to me as though the principle itself has little support here and that may mean that it doesn't need to go any further. There certainly are logistical concerns. My concern about our previous conversation was that we got into, and I think we did it again tonight, into a number of things that while interesting are not directly related to the proposal. And, you know, I'm perfectly content to be the only person at the table who still thinks this is a good idea and have us move on without doing anything else about it. You know, we all, we can all reach different conclusions about what we think best serve the students in this community. I continue to believe that having this available as a policy would encourage more families to consider it. And that one of the difficulties that you always have when the evidence is, is anyone asking for change? Lots of times, people don't ask for things. I mean, one of the first things that it says in the physical education curriculum objectives is obey rules. Doesn't say question rules, it says obey them. Right? That's in our Courses Studies program that we're about to discuss now. So I'm not as comfortable, I think, as other people are here, that the absence of a request means there's an absence of interest or that there would be interest taken on the policy. You know, there's the known and who knows? So.
Laura?
To just clarify this, because I feel similar to Peter, that it felt like a little bit of a circus, like seven different people with seven different perspectives on this. And I wasn't even sure what the true point of what we were discussing was. So I think everybody worked at it from a different perspective. I would be more in support of reviewing which, what level we're going to require. For example, lowering the requirement to four credits for a high school than I would, something that I agree with Deb, that I think limiting it to athletes is discriminatory. I think it is something that those four credits could be really useful for some students who are, you know, more strictly academically minded. And I think it would be a benefit to them when they're applying to really competitive situations. I would entertain that, but I think that limiting it to the athletes is too discriminatory for me to be comfortable supporting.
That is the motion that's on the table, correct?
Correct.
So we don't currently have a second for the motion that's on the table, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that motion is denied. Brian?
I know that as a non-voting member, I don't have much say in motions and such. But I think it would be worth the committee's while to, I would like to suggest a motion that we either do or don't have the Policy Subcommittee investigate this further, if there's interest in doing so.
And I guess that would be our good next question, our next question. Does the committee feel as though we want to move this topic to the Policy Subcommittee for further review, discussion, investigation? Or are we content to leave it as is?
I would be willing to actually go with your suggestion if suggested, if willing. I haven't heard any of that part yet, so.
Should we take a vote? How many people would like to move this to the Policy Subcommittee for further review?
To which specifically?
I think there would need to be a motion to move the discussion, right?
No, 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 no. I mean, we can't even get a second for the policy, Peter delineated specifically. So that clearly is dead in the water. What is it we're suggesting the policy do? Try to draft something totally differently?
No.
What is the purpose of what they're addressing?
The question is, do we want to move this topic, hand it over to the Policy Subcommittee for further review, investigation, discussion, consideration?
What, total fairness, the question is?
PE waivers.
I think that motion just failed.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so we're not planning to move it on? Okay.
But is there, I guess, Mike, I'm just sworn to clarify, I'm not suggesting this. Is there a suggestion, Brian, that there be, someone make a motion to move a conversation around credit requirements? Is that what you're asking?
My interpretation of Peter's motion was to implement his drafted policy. And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but my suggestion was that we hand it to, we hand what we know to the Policy Subcommittee, ask them to investigate it, give us more information, come up with a few drafts if they'd like, or have members of the committee take that information that they get and create possible solutions. So I just, I think that it's important that we either hand it to the Policy Subcommittee as, as Dan mentioned, like this is kind of their expertise to deal with. Either we hand it to the Policy Subcommittee or we put it to rest. And I'm not saying we either do or don't vote on a policy tonight, but kind of just have them further investigate it or not.
Okay, well.
Okay.
Mayor Karen, go ahead.
So following up with what you're saying, and I think this goes right back to how we started our meetings with, you know, the proper procedures. To me, when there is an issue and we want to get more input in it, it should not be discussed here as a whole. It should automatically be sent to your whatever committee. This would have been the Policy Subcommittee instead of us hashing this whole discussion out tonight or last meeting. Anytime an issue like this comes up, I suggest it's sent to the committee at that point in time for their discussion and to bring back to your full committee. We already did that. You've done it two meetings now. So to me, this discussion is over. We've done that. So I don't know why, again, just from my opinion, why we would want to send it to a Subcommittee for them to discuss what we already discussed and decided that there wasn't even a second for a motion.
Right.
So I guess that's where I'm at on that.
Right.
So back to, you know, I think that would be a great thing to follow in the future, but we didn't follow it this time or the last meeting. So I think we've already just kind of hashed it out already.
Right. And so I guess the next question is, has been some discussion of consideration, review of the number of PE credits we require at the high school? Is that something that we're going to just leave alone at this point in time or is that anything that?
I asked the question for clarification. I am not interested at this point in going forward motion to explore it in comparison with the information that's been presented by the UBS.
Okay.
If someone else says, that's a different story, but I just, I asked, it was strictly a point of clarification.
Okay. Any last comment on that? Okay, very good. I guess we are complete. We are finished on this topic. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your thoughtful, thoughtful comments. Okay.
Okay.
Moving on to matters for action.
We have another report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Program of Studies. I'm so sorry. Sorry about that. Dr. Perone?
Yes, I really don't have a report. I shared the Program of Studies with everyone. I don't even remember when I shared it, now with the snow days on Mondays and Tuesdays being canceled, but I shared it for approval. And the most substantive changes in the Program of Studies, this iteration, are based on position loss. And those programs that were cut because their teacher was cut, those classes are taken out. The majority of the changes in it are based around that reason, that a teacher's position was cut and so the classes that that teacher taught is now, are now cut.
And if I could just interject here, as I think I've told the school committee members, we are considering putting a Chapter 74 Criminal Justice Program into the Program of Studies. We're working on it now. It has to go, the application has to go to the state and be approved by the state. So it's currently not in our Program of Studies, but if the program is approved, then we would add that as an addendum.
We would have to do an addendum. And then to come back to a question that was asked prior, Forensics, which used to be a quarter class for two credits, is becoming a four-credit class for a semester to fit within that Chapter 74 pathway. Because that's one of the courses that would be, we would need to have in order to get that pathway.
And I think we explained before that that pathway could lend itself to a career in law as a, you know, a pre-legal kind of pathway or a career in law enforcement. So it's designed to have kind of a pathway for both areas.
And as opposed to a non-Chapter 74, this is a certification program. So students would go through this program once it's approved, take the classes and be able to get a level of certification that prior to now is not offered at East Hampton High School.
What's the timeframe on that? I'm sorry for not asking.
The application has to be in, I think, at the end of March and, actually before that, needs to be in before that. We would have to have approval before April 1st in order to put it into place for this year.
And I know Polly Parker, our Curriculum Director, she has a certification appropriate to a Chapter 74 program. So she's kind of spearheading this and she's worked closely with the team at the high school from different content areas that are trying to put together the requirements for it. And she has a meeting set up, if anybody's curious. I believe, I have to get the date, I think it's February 26th or 24th. February 26th. 26th, yeah. So if anybody's curious, they could come and hear some more about that, which is a really exciting opportunity for our students, not for you, for some of our students that are underclassmen and for the school itself.
I've been asked to sit on an advisory board for this, so I can bring you updates. I'm looking forward to the meeting on 26th to try to get it off the ground.
Now, I feel like I'm going to rain on the parade. Not to detract in this, but I'm wondering, we haven't even started budget discussions yet and, you know, considering the situation we found ourselves in last year, I'm twofold wondering how certain we are that everything we have in here will be able to maintain fiscally. And then secondly, the addition of a new program, what's the financial impact of something like that? Just that required new staffing, was it, you know, what's the general impact?
And I, just as Perkins brings money into the high school, based on the Perkins pathways that we have, early childhood development, some of the computer and media classes that we have, Design Tech did, just as Perkins brings money in, a Chapter 74 program would bring money in to the class. And we wouldn't lose, or to the school, excuse me, and we wouldn't lose students. So if a student wanted to take Criminal Justice, they might go to another program that offers it. If we have it, we would retain those students. So there's a financial bonus in the program.
The fully covers the added expense of a program like that?
Just, if I could, the courses that we have in our Program of Studies are encapsulated in the CJ program.
So we pretty much already have what we need.
We have, we have forensics, we have psychology, we have criminal justice. So we have many of the courses that we already need to get the CJ going or we wouldn't even have this discussion. One of the requirements, and again, this is based on some conversations, is a lab component to it. So I know we have to bring people into the program too.
And what sort of certification do those instructors have if they're teaching like pre-law stuff? Just out of curiosity, I'm wondering, like, what do you, is it English-based? Is it social science-based?
I know there is a on-and-off course. The way that the History Department currently operates, there are a lot of extra elective courses. I know last year I took AP Government and Politics, but that's not being offered this year and it will be offered again next year. So it kind of like flip-flops year by year. And I know one teacher, Mr. Brown, currently teaches a Legal Studies course. So I think...
Would have been my guess.
Yeah, kind of falls into that category. And he's a social science teacher.
I'm seeing it's February and our next focus, I've already had conversations and been approached by people who are concerned about the budget. We're having conversations now about adding programs. I want to clarify for the public that it's not, you know?
In the program, the addition of this program is the Chapter 74, yeah, the Chapter 74 pathway, not so much we have to bring in two teachers to start a new program. We have a program that captures much of what a CJ program needs. And the work that's being done now by the committee that's being put together and Polly Parker is to flesh out the proposal to run a Chapter 74 program at East Hampton High School.
Which would bring additional funding into the district. So it's...
I largely understood, I'd like that to be public record. I'd like that.
Yes, if we were to get a Chapter 74 program in place, it would bring additional funding into our district. And that's, we discovered that we already had through our Curriculum Director's work with the high school, what we needed in place pretty much to have this Chapter 74 program. So now it's just about filling out the application and having it accepted by the state in time for us to put it into place in the fall, which again, would bring in additional funding. And, you know, my last conversation with her is that, you know, we can put the program into place without any additional funding above and beyond what we have currently in place already. So we decided it was worth the effort.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything to add?
So the majority of the changes in there are because of cuts that were made. The forensics is a change that's made because we're looking towards the possibility of Chapter 74. So it went from a two to a four credit. As Brian has said, there, because of budget cuts and staffing issues, we are alternating some classes. For example, AP Bio, we tried to run it twice, it didn't run. So AP Bio's not going to be offered this year. AP Statistics ran and ran at a high number, so we're going to keep AP Statistics, things like that.
When do you, questions, do you do some sort of surveying or something? Or at what point do they start scheduling so you can see, oh, so looking forward to next fall, we already have some idea?
We're behind because of the miss. Yeah, because of the miss at school committee. We should have already had this approved. We have our open house tomorrow night and that's the kind of the kickoff when we disseminate the Program of Studies. So Mr. Burke and I are going to sit down and look at formatting once we have approval and put it in a nice order for dissemination and upload to the website.
No pressure, though.
Just in terms of technical details?
Yes.
Contact information in the Guidance Department, the first paragraph, it needs to be updated.
Oh, really?
It doesn't have lines through some things, it needs lines through.
Oh, really?
Just to throw it out there.
Okay. Okay, I'll look at that.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to, we need to approve, yes?
A motion to approve the East Hampton High School Program of Studies for the academic year 2015 to 2016?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lori Ingraham?
Sorry.
A motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now moving on to matters for action. The minutes from our last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the School Committee Work Session on January 13th, 2015, at 6:15 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the School Committee Regular Session met on January 13th, 2015.
Second. All those in favor?
All right, do you need more information? You got it? Okay.
Okay, Rebecca, all those in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that? Okay, any abstentions? Karen is an abstention?
Yes.
Can we have warrants and payroll?
Yeah, sorry. Here we go.
All right.
All right. Motion to approve the school payroll dated February 5th, 2015, in the amount of $451,159.92.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstention?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated February 5th, 2015, in the amount of $82,190.50.
Second. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute.
Uh, motion to approve the school payroll dated January 22nd, 2015 in the amount of $457,786.23.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated January 22nd, 2015 in the amount of $534,453.19.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's it.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, go ahead, dear.
Just, uh, I had a question about the process. I, I know that there was some difficulty with having folks respond in terms of making signatures. I was curious about the timing. It seemed as though the window was pretty short this last time. I don't know if that was affected by the weather or if we need to reconsider our practice of, of, of how information came in. My recollection was the request came in on a Tuesday, um, when I, you know, I was unable, because I was traveling both on Tuesday and Wednesday and offered to come in on Thursday. And I was told that we were going to turn into a pumpkin at noon on Wednesday. Um, in no uncertain terms, I was told that, uh, via email. And I was surprised that it was such a narrow window of,
Yeah.
I need the warrant to be signed. We need the warrant to be signed, and we need to be signed now. And I'm wondering if we could afford ourselves a little more time.
If it's available outside of? Yeah.
A little more time. I, I don't know what the, what the practice is, so.
I'll look into that. I didn't, yeah, I'll see.
And I was all, I had mentioned to Nancy a suggestion that if, um, we were texted the request rather than emailed. I know I could be much more responsive. If I received the message via text, I could be quicker to respond. So, I just threw that out as a suggestion also.
Yeah, can I, can we maybe make a, when we're in work session tonight, maybe all of us write our best contact, like, if, you know, and we can hand that directly to her, because I'm sure she would.
Mm-hmm.
She just wants somebody there. Like, I don't, you know, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, wait. We're a motion to move into work session?
I think we still adjourn.
I think we have to adjourn this, though, don't we?
Yeah, I think we still adjourn.
Because it's just a work session? Isn't it because it's just a work session?
No, I think it's a public meeting.
Yes, I have to stay. Sue said I have to stay and take notes.
So, we don't adjourn. She has adjourned on here.
We move into work session.
Well, she said immediately following-
Very good.
There we go, yeah.
So, I think you have to adjourn from this meeting, move into that one, and open it up again.
So, it's not a work session? I think so.
I don't know who I'm responsible for.
I'm pretty sure.
But Sue has it, she did the agenda and she said.
It's okay.
It's okay.
Clearly, all of us are like, ugh.
Oh, that's executive session.
Right.
So, I don't know. Well.
I think we moved.
I think we moved to-
Yeah, move to relocate.
Move to the work session.
Yeah.
Second? Okay. All those in favor of moving to the work session?
Aye.
Aye.